Hi, Barbara. Hi, Barbara. Good evening. Good evening.
How is everyone?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm doing better.
Is everybody present? There's 7:01. Let me say good evening to everybody as well. And we will, we will start our meeting. So we have called the meeting to order. Roll call.
Alderman West. Alderman Tatman.
Here.
Alderman Reed.
Present.
Alderman Carroll.
Here.
Alderman Thomas.
Oh, present.
Alderman Christian.
Here.
Alderman Dale. Alderman.
Present.
Okay. Alderman Avant Elliott.
Present.
Alderman.
Saint West.
Yes, ma'am.
Present.
Okay. And then the mayor, the city clerk, the chief, and the city attorney is present.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
May I have my hand up?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have my hand up thing. Let me see here.
Let the participants in then check.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for August 13, 2020.
Does that second?
I'm sorry, second.
My hand is up, mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm sorry. Proceed, Alderman Elliott.
Um, I second it.
Okay.
Make sure you lower your hand down.
Remove and proper second that we will approve the agenda on in favor, say aye.
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 Boze's may.
Aye.
As have it. Just try that to. And I'd like to read a statement. That says a number of citizens as well as several board members have raised concern about the board meeting which was held yesterday, August 12, accordingly, since notices of the special meeting call. About for all the persons for August 12, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. Was not provided in accordance with the sunshine law. And there were other illegal improprieties which could expose the city to liability. It is in the best interest of the city that I am requesting the city attorney to render a legal opinion and findings regarding whether the meetings were properly called in accordance with and whether the resolutions and other actions taken at that meeting were lawful.
Point of order, mayor.
Procedurally efficient. Or have any legal effect. Attorney is requested to render a legal opinion with findings to the city on these matters by the next regular scheduled meeting of the board, which will be held August 20, 2020. The next thing on the agenda would be public comments. We will open the meeting with the public for three minutes.
May I have my hand up? May I speak, please?
Okay, go right ahead.
I would, may I agree with you that we would like for our city attorney to do an investigation on the meeting yesterday and render a decision. And I'm in agreement with that as Alderman Dale's Ward Four.
All right, Alderman Thomas.
This is Alderman Thomas, third ward. I'm in agreement with you, mayor, that the city attorney conduct an investigation on the meeting that was held yesterday on August the 12th at 7:00 p.m. The Board of Alderman meeting that was held yesterday.
Point of order, mayor.
What's your point of order? What's your point of order?
There are Aldermen indicating what their wishes are, and there is not a motion that has gone forth to accept anyone conducting an investigation on behalf of the city.
All right, your point of is, is not received. And Alderman Tatman.
This is Alderman Dinah Tatman, first ward. I also agree with the investigation to be conducted by legal counsel concerning Board of Aldermen, special meeting that was here on yesterday, Wednesday, August 12th at 7:00 o'clock p.m.
All right, anyone else? Then the meeting is open to three minutes each.
I don't know. This is Wanda Lane. I don't know how to raise my hand as a citizen. But in, in view of the mayor's statement, I had some questions to ask about the meeting yesterday. But in light of his statement, I will defer till after the city attorney has done her investigation. But mayor, may I, may I ask a question to the city clerk?
Yes.
City clerk, I am asking why there were changes made to the August 12, 2020 agenda that was posted yesterday on our city website versus the information that was posted today on our city website.
For the August 12th meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Nothing was posted today for August 12th?
Well, I made a copy of the agenda from August 12, on August 12. I made that copy yesterday. The title says, "Special Emergency Board Meeting, Wednesday, August 12, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m." That's what was posted yesterday. The resolutions, A, B, and C, but most importantly, at the bottom of the page, it is posted 8/12/2020 at 8:45 a.m. by the city clerk. I went on the website today to make copies of the resolutions that were discussed. And I accidentally touched August 12th agenda, and I have a whole new different agenda. It stated, well, the word emergency is now above special meeting in a different font. Wednesday, August 12, 7:00 p.m. The resolutions have changed. They're still A, B, and C, but the order has changed. But most importantly, the note, the notation that posted on August 12, 2020 at 8:45 a.m. Has been removed from today's posting. Were you directed to make any changes to this agenda?
Okay, then let me explain that, Ms. Lane. Both of those agendas was posted yesterday. The first one was posted at 8:45, the one you see. The second one was posted about between 2:45 and 3:00 o'clock because I had to put just a second. I had to put the resolutions on the line. So I noticed that agenda that I had the resolutions attached to did not have the word emergency on there, so I put it at the top. Also says. And it's going to be an extra rejoins of four instead of three. Okay, so I put the word emergency on that second one, but that, that agenda says addendum to the August 12th. So they're the same. It's just that.
I, I, I'm sorry, clerk. I, I just touched print, and I don't see addendum anywhere because under the addendum, there was a second link that we had to top, to touch.
Ms. Lane, on the computer, on the website, it said addendum. The, the word addendum is not on the actual agenda that's on the website, so that people that go to the website to get the agenda would also see the resolutions. So they were both posted yesterday, not today.
Okay, Ms. Lane, let me, let, let me deal with that tomorrow to try to get you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, this is your time. Everyone from the public. Because on this agenda, we do not have another space for the public to speak.
Hi, good evening. Oh, my name is Stephanie Harfield, and I am a resident of Ward One. I toughed it out yesterday evening and endured all four hours of that meeting. Fortunately, I had the stamina to do it. My only takeaway from that is that I didn't appreciate the candor or the flow of the meeting at all. I found a lot of exchanges and interactions to be less than professional when it comes to the conduct of liquid officials for this, for the city and this community. I think that we all deserve better. And I'm hoping that this evening's meeting is, is much more professional where conduct is concerned.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? We move on to agenda items. New business. Approval of the invoices over 500. Can I get a motion to approve the invoices over 500?
Yes, mayor. I would like to make a motion that we approve invoices over 500.
Mayor, I had my hand raised. Are you not using the hand raising functionality anymore?
I, I don't see. I have it, I have it up right in front of me, but I do not see.
Now withdraw my motion so my colleague in the second ward can give the motion.
Because I don't, I mean, I don't see a hand up.
Mayor, click on participants and then click on chat.
I've done that, so.
You see hands now? You put your hand up. You see your hand up?
All right, let's proceed.
I would like to motion to approve the bills for August 12 through the 13th. 11 invoices in the amount of $38,172.29 with the removal of the attorney's bill for the bill 27 for 23 for time to review.
What is this kind of view? You don't want to pay the city attorney?
There's two bills on there in one month.
Right, that's because she, she wasn't paid in a kind of fashion. There haven't to be two on there, yes.
Right. And we just got those today. I mean, I'm not understanding why we're now getting our invoices later and later, but we just got that today.
Okay. Yes.
This is Dorothy White, the city attorney, and I would like to speak to that, please. The first bill was submitted on June 30th. And although I was told that no payment was forthcoming, and I brought it to the attention of the city clerk who told me a check had been mailed, and he indicated that she did not know what was going on. She checked into it and found out that no check was mailed, and I would defer to her to speak to that. The second bill was submitted on August 4th. So we're talking about more than a month later that the 30th bill was submitted. That's the reason there are two. I didn't submit them at the same time.
That, that wasn't directed at me, right? That was directed at the mayor that runs the city and would would actually let Lori, you know, know about, you know, our, our finance manager that she would been holding up bills or whatever. I'm talking about us as a board, the packet we got today. It was no reference to the attorney herself. It's a reference to our internal operations of just getting those invoices today.
Thank you, Alderman Reed. I only wanted to explain my understanding of why there were two bills there.
All right, Alderman Carroll had his hand up first. Alderman Carroll. Are you muted?
I'm sorry, I, I stuck it.
Okay. Remove and proper second that we would approve the bills over 500. Are there any further discussions?
Point of order, mayor. Point of order, mayor. Point of order.
What's your point of order? Yes.
That was not the motion. The motion is in the chat room, in the chat area, so we are not approving over 500 as it is. So she has indicated an exact emotion of the bills that will be approved, and you didn't state that. You said we was approving over 500.
Right, well, just let me caution you all that you, at the last board meeting last week, that some of our creditors have been rejecting us because bills are not being paid on time. The reason I've been paid on time is because you all always have some problems with approving the bills over 500. Therefore, it makes us late paying the bills. So I just want you to know that. You know, Alderman Tatman.
Yes, I was going to mention at this point of clarification, we had a board meeting, a regular board meeting on this day, and we were supposed to pay bills then, and those didn't happen. And for clarification, I thought we had a special meeting to pay bills over 500. Were these bills not included in that packet?
These are bills that came, mayor, may I answer that?
Yes, please.
Okay. These are bills that came after we had that special meeting to pay the bills. And the board members, you guys got these bills just today because normally you wouldn't have gotten them until next week at our regular board meeting. Because we were doing a special meeting today, it was requested that if there were any bills to be paid, to go ahead and, and submit those bills. So they came today because Lori just got back from vacation, and she started pulling the bills together in order to have these ready. Normally, you wouldn't have gotten them until next week. Now, to answer about the city attorney's bill, she did commit her first bill when she was, when she came aboard, and that bill, that invoice was held up for for you guys to look it over. And then she sent her second bill. And for some reason, when I checked with the finance clerk, when she sent that one, Lori thought that was the first bill. So she didn't pay it, and that's what I found out, attorney, when I told you that she said that it was paid, she was talking about the first one. So right now, we have three bills from the city attorney. The first one's been paid, and then these are the second one and the third one. So after that discussed with the finance clerk, she realized her mistake, and she put them together and submitted them to you guys for tonight.
So Alderman Reed, does that? Okay, so, uh, Alderman Reed, does that satisfy your, your concern? Alderman Reed, does that satisfy your concern?
Um, I mean, it still doesn't speak to us having time to review it. I mean, it's fine what happened. Um, even the attorney just said she submitted that on August the 4th. It's now August 13th. We have a meeting on August 20th. You typically have a thirty-day payment period, so that would give us enough time to review that one bill. She has been paid for her first month and May is on here. This is just, uh, I'm sorry, April is on here. This is the May bill that was just submitted August 4th.
Okay. Are there any further discussion?
Um, yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry, let me go down the line here. Alderman Chapman.
Um, just for a point of clarification again, I heard, uh, my, my colleague in, uh, Ward Two to state that there's normally a thirty-day, uh, lag behind, and I just heard, unless I heard incorrectly, that, uh, May bill has been paid, but we're looking at June and July. And so I would, um, confer to and, um, submit that we pay the bills. If there's any questions about the bills, that it can be adjusted.
May I just clarify something?
Sure.
Only bill that has been paid is the March bill. The April bill, the only bill that has been paid is the March bill. The April and the May bill have not been paid. The April bill was submitted in June, I believe on June 27th. Um, and the May bill was submitted August 4th. I just wanted to clarify that information.
All right.
Thank you.
Alderman Dales.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I would like to know, um, with, um, and directing this to Alderman Reed, would it be sufficient enough if we pay all the bills and if there's some discrepancies that we can make an adjustment? We just want to stay on time and make sure that we pay all of our bills. Would that be possible? Would that be, you know, could you agree to that? And that's addressed to Alderman Reed, Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Reed, do you have a response?
Is it my turn to speak, Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, my question is, um, we had a bill on here for Keystone, and I was wondering why are we paying for some training from August the 19th through August 20th? So this training for Keystone actually expires on August 26th. Why are we paying something a year later that we aren't using? I mean, the, uh, the city clerk actually signed that invoice, and then, um, the Verizon bill actually has a different total amount due on it than what we're actually paying. So there was nowhere indicated on that invoice that we had actually paid that past due amount. So I'm just wondering if you have reviewed those invoices and could, uh, answer to those two questions?
No. Uh, does anyone can answer that? I, I don't have, uh, I don't have an answer. So we'll move to, uh, Alderman Elliott.
Okay, Mayor, um, for one, I just want to say that, um, we have held, at least during the pandemic, maybe two or three special meetings to do over five hundred. So the reason for late payments has nothing to do with approval. It seems like there are some internal control issues that is, um, uh, causing these issues. I did want to inquire, um, about the consultant services. It says has, has Matt Services for, um, Troy Jefferson, um, does he have a company or what type of experience does he have to offer those types of services to the city?
He is training in that area, just as, uh, the prior person who cleaned that up, uh, I don't know her name now.
Gary.
It was an accident that, uh, was paralyzed. So she was doing it. She's been trained in it. She doesn't have a company. She didn't have a company. And Troy doesn't have a company either, but it saves us money to have someone like him do it than to have a company. We interviewed a company and, uh, we didn't have the money to pay a company.
So with his, so, so did his cleaning or lack of cleaning cause the, the individuals to have the COVID testing positive or what, why would they experience, um, COVID testing and being positive? Or, um, someone that's in their department that has a cleaning contract?
Well, I mean, I can't answer that, but, uh, that has nothing to do with cleaning. I mean, he's cleaning the building and prior to him, there was no one cleaning the building. There was trash everywhere, and that problem has been solved, and so, so be it.
So additionally, um, the other concern is at some point, his, the amount that he gets collectively is going to be over a certain amount that may require a bid. So do you have any contract or some type of, of service agreement with him because it hasn't been board approved and brought to us? So do you have anything that will show us what, um, his monthly schedule and cost is to know whether or not we, um, would need to be at that per ordinance?
Well, there is no monthly set cost. When, when the, when a police car needs to clean up because there's blood, um, vomit or something in there, or the jail, they call him, and he cleans it up. So there is no regular schedule. It's when needed.
Okay, so based on that statement, if there is blood that needs to be cleaned up during the daytime when he's working in the street department, how would he be able to service the, uh, the police department, um, at that time? Because then he will be double dipping. So how can he service them at the time that he scheduled to work? And has he been moved over to the proper department that he should be in based on the closed session?
He's in the proper department that I hired him for.
But I'm talking about what was decided in closed session. Has that been abided to, Mayor? The, the decision in closed session that the majority of the board voted on, has that been complied with?
No, what was that decision? That he quit?
Well, we don't want to say it out in open, but.
Like that, but that's what you mean.
He was, so the process was for that person to vacate their position and apply for a position that was vacant.
Point of order, please. Point of order, please. Point of order.
Yes, what's your point of order?
My point of order is we went from, um, making a motion to pay bills to all of these extenuating subjects. I think is out of order, that we stick with the motion first that was to approve to pay the bills over five hundred. And then the applicable things that we're discussing now, if it's placed on the agenda, that's where those things ought to be discussed.
It is a part of the budget discussion to discuss individuals who are getting paid from the city. So that is, and we're, we are in the, we are in the portion, question and debate.
Okay, your point of order is, your point of order is well taken. Let's, uh, let me hear from, uh, let's see. I don't see any other hands, other than. City Attorney, your hands up.
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, to the extent matters that were discussed in closed session are coming up here, they should not. What was discussed in closed session should remain in closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Chapman.
Also for clarification, um, Mr. Chair, to point of clarification, uh, if I am correct, last year, I believe that we approved for Mr. Jefferson to do the cleaning after, uh, a person that had the accident. If I'm not mistaken, I think we voted for him to do that. I can be, it can be, can I finish, please? Like I said, I'm doing a point of clarification, and I said, I believe, so the minute meetings can be checked because I know we discussed it. So that was my point of clarification.
Okay, um, Alderman Elliott.
Yes, um, we have not had any, um, approval of him cleaning anything. And the reason why his name can be used jointly in this particular conversation is because he is a contractor. So we are not violating anything by using, referencing his name. Unfortunately, when that person's name also is associated with a city position, um, it's difficult to distinguish, uh, what that person is doing separate from their regular position. But at this point, um, the mayor is in violation of not putting that person in the proper hiring position. And speaking of a position is not a, a violation of a closed session conversation.
Alderman West.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think we really got off point because there was a motion. Excuse me, before, I think there was a second, people started interjecting. So we just got way off base, and I think we'd need to go back, uh, to the motion. Have it seconded or not, uh, then the discussion should have taken place.
All right.
Point of information, Mayor, um, it has been properly seconded.
That's true. All right, so, uh, and we, and I asked for more discussion, so apparently the discussion has ended. So, uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
I would like to have the motion repeated, please.
The motion is to approve the agenda, I mean, approve the, uh, the over five hundred.
Point of order, Mayor, my motion is in the chat box for you, please.
All right, she, um, she, uh, Alderman Reed, a minute to motion to approve eleven invoices in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-nine cent, uh, removing, uh, several bills. So all right, all in favor of the motion, uh, with the, uh, with the amendment?
Mayor, point of order, she didn't amend anything. Her motion is exactly as stated, and you did not state it as exactly indicated. You kind of like, you know.
Well, she wanted to pull those out, didn't she? So I'm asking for the motion to be approved with those, uh, with those changes. Can we move forward with a vote now?
Mayor, my, my hand is raised. May we please have the city clerk repeat the motion as it was stated? And this is Alderman West.
Mayor.
The mo- this, the motion was stated to approve the over five hundred. And then there was, um, Ald- Alderman Reed wanted to pull, uh, the attorney's, uh, invoice, and, uh, and apparently that's, that's the case, and we want to approve the agenda with those changes.
Uh, Mayor, this is Alderman West again. My request is to have the city clerk, who takes the minutes, read the motion as it was stated by Alderman Reed.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
Motion made by Alderman Reed to approve eleven invoices in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-nine cent, removing bill two seven four two three for time to review.
Thank you.
And it was seconded by Alderman Carroll.
All right, all in favor, say aye, uh.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign.
Oppose.
Who, who is that? Christian?
Christian.
Okay.
Nay.
Nay.
Um, okay.
Okay, I guess I'm.
Who said what?
Right, I don't know.
Give me a roll call.
Okay, Alderman West.
Nay.
Alderman Reed. Alderman Chapman.
Nay.
Alderman Carroll.
Yes.
Alderman Thomas.
Nay.
Alderman Christian.
Nay.
Alderman, um, Dales.
No.
And Alderman Avon Elliott.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, you have one, two, three yes and five nay.
Okay, so then those invoices will stay in, so we need a motion now to, uh, to pass the invoices over five hundred as they, uh, the motion to pass the, the over five hundred.
Yes, sir.
I raise my, I raise my hand, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Although, I think Alderman West had hers up first.
Alderman, Alderman Dales, let's, uh, go ahead.
Alderman West had hers up. Um, I think it's down now. I make a motion to, let me get the total out.
The over five hundred, yeah.
I would like to make a motion to pay the bills of four, forty-eight thousand, three hundred and five dollars and twenty-nine cent.
Is there a second? Uh, let's see. Is there a second? I mean, if you got your, if you got your hand up, just, uh, Alderman Chapman.
I second.
Okay. All in favor, are there any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes, further discussion. I'm sorry. Let me raise my hand.
All right, uh, Alderman Elliott, go right ahead.
Yes, um, we have had concerns about, um, information received twenty-four hours in advance. This was a situation that matched that, and, um, with that in mind, I think it would be, um, um, our responsibility and due diligence to review those bills, uh, effectively. That's why I voted for, um, time to review. I was the, all the person who inquired about bills to put on the agenda to make sure that we did not have any problems. But I do know with the lateness of receipt of the, of over five hundreds, I've asked probably since Monday, and to get them so late, there is not an accurate review of all the transactions. There is not a single reason that we're not going to pay anything. It just will have to go on the next agenda, which will give everybody enough time to review those items. Right now, that review has not taken place. That's, that's my, um, my debate.
Uh, anyone else? All right, then, uh, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Alderman Avon Elliott?
No.
Alderman Dales?
Yes.
Alderman Christian?
No.
Alderman Thomas?
Yes.
Alderman West?
No.
Alderman Chapman?
Yes.
Alderman Reed?
No.
Alderman Carroll?
No.
Three noes, I'm sorry. Three yes and five noes, Mayor.
Okay, so the motion, uh, the motion fails, so we won't pay the bills. All right, then we move down to, uh.
Mayor, my hand is raised.
All right, Alderman Elliott.
I would like to make a motion to, uh, move the approval of over five hundreds to the, um, next general board meeting, given the board, the entire board opportunity for, um, complete review.
Alderman Reed, seconds.
Okay, any other, any further, any further discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposes?
Nay.
Okay. As have it.
I have my hand, yeah, I have my hand up.
Excuse me?
No, I'm sorry, I had my hand up, but that's okay, that's okay.
So the, the payment of bills will be on the next, on the, on the, uh, agenda next week.
All the woman Chapman, your hand is still raised.
I know.
All right, all woman Chapman.
Just again, point of clarification, so we're waiting another week to pay the bills, which are already late. I just want a point of clarification, that's all.
Who you directing that to?
You idiot. I'm sorry, that was.
Point of order, point of order, Mayor, can, can, Mayor, Mayor.
Yes.
People making comment derogatory comments, can we, uh, have everybody muted?
Uh, who is that calling me?
I don't know, but, um.
I think that was all the woman from Jennings.
All the woman from Jennings.
Okay. Yeah, I just want a point of clarification, that's, that's all.
Alrighty. The only thing we can do is just not pay them until after next week. The board has already voted not to pay them, not to approve them. So we'll pay them whenever they approve them. Alrighty. Accounts payable investigation. Uh, what that is, now who put it on there? So it's on the agenda. We'll move down to budget amendment.
Mayor, I got my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, let's see. All right, all, all. Uh, yeah, Alderman Carol.
I move that the Board of Aldermen form a committee of four alderpersons to investigate accounts payable. And at the next BOA meeting, August twentieth, make nominations and appointments to this committee.
All woman Elliot.
Um, I was just, um, had my hand raised to clarify what that accounts payable investigation is. Um, on the meeting that continued after the quorum was not there. The chief indicated that there was credit, um, being lost, but no information had been provided to the board, um, prior to that. Do you have any information on how many creditors, Mayor, that we have, uh, lost credit with based on the statement that chief indicated?
No, I don't. Chief, do you have any further information on that? Chief?
Uh, no, sir, at this time I do not. I know it was discussed. Uh, was it earlier this week or last week? It was up to six creditors that the street department and I identified. But at this, right here at this time, I couldn't tell you. But I know there are still a few outstanding.
So Mayor, Mayor, could you explain how that happens? How do we lose credit?
Mayor, Mayor.
I was still, oh, I was still asking.
Point of order. This is, I think this is better left for debate. I've already made a motion either.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize. I, I apologize, I second.
Uh, so what is, restate your motion, please.
Okay, I move that the Board of Alderpersons form a committee of four alderpersons to investigate accounts payable. And at the next Board of Alderpersons meeting, August twentieth, make nominations and appointments to this committee.
Uh, is there a second?
Christian will second. All the woman Avon Elliot is seconded.
Okay. Are there any further discussion? I see all Elliot's hand up.
Oh, I was in the middle of, um, clarifying, um, um, the information about the reasons why we have come to this point. Was there any prior information sent to your office as a warning saying that this will, would be coming and some type of intervention could happen? Uh, I'm just trying to get clarification on how did it come to this point? Um, and we have the same clerk and processes as we've had with the previous administration. We have been approving and having special board meetings to have over five hundreds. This was just a request of mine for the agenda when it was going to be on the, the next one, so it's nothing past due. Um, it was just to be proactive, but do you have, did you ever receive notifications from creditors saying as a warning that this was about to happen?
I did not, but, uh, I, I did talk to, uh, I did talk to Laurie. Laurie is afraid to pay those bills without board approval because she fear you all will come down on her. And so she's not going to pay them until uh, the board approves them.
I mean, that's the proper process, but as far as them being late, why would they be late if we are having special, we have a special meetings to pay them? We have the two regular meetings, so essentially in a month, we might meet three times to pay over five hundreds. Is there any notification that has come to the city saying as a warning that this is about to happen before it actually, before we actually lost credits with my inquiry?
Not that I'm aware of. All right, we have, we have, uh, where are we on with the motion?
We're on debate, Mayor.
Okay, debates ended, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposers, nay. All right, as have it. Zoom web, Zoom webinar package purchase.
I know, all the mayor, there is, um, item C on the agenda that's been skipped.
Oh, I'm sorry, budget, budget amendment, city administrator. All woman Elliot.
Um, this was placed, placed on the agenda, um, because we have, um, learned that it would be best to readjust our decision around, um, the bond funds. And so I wanted to entertain, um, a discussion. So I would ask for permission to go into informal discussion about the budget amendments. Is that the proper, I would like to make a motion to go into, um, informal discussion about, um, the budget amendments.
All the woman West, I second.
Uh, Alderman Carol.
I second her motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
Okay, as have it, so proceed.
Okay, so, um, chief is on the line. Um, last year, we, um, the board had approved for a position in the police department that remained vacant. And, um, when we were doing budget discussions this time again, it was stated that that position, um, was filled because of, you know, the information not getting to him. He didn't know it. Maybe chief can better explain. But I wanted to ask you, Chair, um, whether or not that position is a, a position that qualifies as the one that should have been vacant from the previous budget. Budget year.
Chief, can you answer?
Uh, yes, sir, I can. So for the twenty nineteen, uh, twenty twenty budget year, the board elected to forego the filling of two vacancies that were already vacant at the time that the budget was approved. Um, those two vacancies were never filled. Recent resignation of the officer the, the other week is already a position that was budgeted last year and also this year. So that position was not one of those two positions. Those two positions that are, that weren't budgeted are still vacant at this time. And one of those positions is an administrator. And the other one is a detective slash public relations officer, uh, two of which I don't have right now.
Thank you for the clarification.
All my.
I'm sorry.
Allman Christian.
Uh, just another way if people are wanting to know about money and things and just to have another way of figuring out how to pay for this. One thing we can do to get us to a hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred dollars as a ba- as a salary, not as a base, but that as available. We could readjust the uh, job description and include in the city administrators pay the title of treasurer and city clerk. And we could get rid of having twenty thousand from the, uh, cap, or thirty thousand from the capital and twenty thousand from the sewer fund. And the, or twenty thousand from the bond, street bond fund, I mean, the twenty thousand from sewer could stay because that person would be the administrator of the sewer fund. So that's allowed to be in there. And if you did that, we could have a hundred and eleven thou- a hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred dollars just by changing the titles of the, uh, or adding into the descriptions of the, uh, city administrator two additional titles, which they would become responsible for, and that pay is already there. Since we're talking about the pay, that's another way to pay for it all.
Um, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, allman Elliot.
Yes, I wanted to ask, um, can I engage, um, Alderman Christian in clarification? Um, uh, around whether or not, um, the city clerk and treasurer positions would have to be eliminated in order to satisfy that, that particular, uh, proposal.
Allman Christian.
They, the positions wouldn't be eliminated, they would be incorporated into the city administrator position. There would still be a city clerk, but the city administrator would take on the role as city clerk. The city administrator would also take on the role as the city treasurer. Those are both appointed positions that could be rolled into a city administrator's job. That's just another way of looking at ways to find the money for it. That's all I was looking at and thinking of.
No, I was just asking would our, our current, um, appointees have to, um, be terminated in order for that to happen? That's what I was trying to get clear.
Yes, the, 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 those, those positions would be rolled into the city administrator's job positions, yes. And the city administrator would be responsible for it.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Madam Clark, where are we on, uh, on, on, on a motion and a vote?
Well, we have the motion from Avon Elliot and seconded by Carol, but we didn't get the vote.
What, okay, so when you say you didn't get the vote?
We didn't, uh, present for a vote.
Mayor.
So many, yeah.
That, that, that motion that, uh, all the woman Avon Elliot made was to just informally discuss this issue. It wasn't to decide anything.
Okay, so just an informal, um.
We're just informally discussing, nothing's before the board or anything. We're just having a discussion about the, the budget amendments.
Okay. So, all right, let's move to the next item. Communication, uh, I'm not communicating, community outreach, back to school drive through.
On a, on a mayor, um, number D under budget A.
I'm sorry, uh, Zoom webinar package purchase. Let me see here. Uh, allman Elliot.
Okay, um, this was put on per the recommendation of the parliamentarian for us to have a web, a norm, uh, package in order to effectively facilitate our board meetings. Um, the suggestion would be that we do webinar is live and then, um, how we proceed on, um, individual reports or, um, comments would be based on a discussion of the board. But the Zoom webinar will allow us to be live on YouTube. And so at this time, I wanted to make a motion for us to purchase that package and I believe is additional forty dollars a month. And if it's not that amount, um, I believe that it is no more than, uh, fifty dollars. So I would like to make a motion to, um, approve the addition of the webinar package, uh, with Zoom. Let me put it in the motion for you. I move uh, that the board, um, purchase the additional Zoom package to include a webinar.
Uh, Alderman Carol.
I second.
Moved and properly second, uh, are there any further discussion? All woman Elliot.
No, I don't have any discussion, I apologize, I'm lowering my hand.
Alderman Thomas.
Yes, uh, uh, Mayor, could you ask, uh, the city clerk if she's like, if she looked into, uh, the, uh, specific costs since we don't know and also what the difference from what we're doing now would be for her to, uh, for the downloading or anything else that might have to happen?
Okay, no, I didn't look into that. I can, but I did not. I wasn't sure what this was about on here until she just said it.
Okay. Okay.
All the woman Dales.
That's all I have.
All the woman Dales, you got to unmute yourself.
I apologize. Um, before we take a vote on it, I would like to know the total cost. Um, if we need to bid it out. So I would like to know the total cost in addition to what we're paying now. Is that available?
All woman Elliot.
I just went to Zoom and I copied ads, video webinars for forty dollars a month. It's currently fourteen, uh, fourteen dollars and ninety nine cent a month. So this is a feature that we're adding to a purchase that has already been made.
Okay, Alderman Carol. Uh, all, okay, so I know, I see no hands up now.
I did have one other question.
Okay.
Can you, uh, can we get, uh, a better clarification, uh, Mayor from, uh, someone concerning actually what this webinar will be, uh, how it will provide, what it will provide for the citizens and what it will provide for us as a Board of Alderpeople.
Uh, all woman Elliot, can you address that?
Yes, um, if a question can be directed to Alderman Thomas on whether or not, um, he was able to review the parliamentarian video and the documents that he sent related to Zoom. Chair, could you direct that question to him for clarification that'll assist with his inquiry?
Uh, Alderman Thomas, did you hear that response?
Oh, yes, I did. No, I have not been able to, I have, uh, not been able to review that.
Okay, so.
And it would help, it, it would help if you would, if you could just, uh, give me the information, please.
Okay, but it's there as well, so I, I needed to get clarification first. So the Zoom package is the, um, parliamentarian provided us specific implementation and directions during their training, if it's been reviewed that suggested some structure to our board meetings that will allow us to conduct business with no disruptions, have, um, a process where the citizens can review and, uh, we'd be able to conduct pretty much business without, um, a lot of interruptions. So the setup will be live on a YouTube, Facebook, it wouldn't matter. And then there is the invite process that happens when people want to do reports that we invite them into the room. If you want to see example of how that works, um, St. Louis Public School Districts, when they were doing Zoom, will be a good example of how that works. So um, if you watch it, it's on YouTube. If you are able to look at, um, the Riverview Fire District Town Hall meeting when they talked about Prop I, that will be example how Zoom can be used where they were live on YouTube where people can watch it live. Live whether they dial in or not, and then we can conduct business without interruptions because we can manage that process along the way. Right now, the parliamentarian said that we are positioning ourselves to be Zoom bombed where somebody can come in. And, um, post inappropriate content to our Zoom because we are sharing the actual link, um, to the public. So if you do it live, that, that, um, stream lines the process where you don't get Zoom bombed. And have someone to come in and, uh, with inappropriate content and be able to, um. I guess it kind of will be similar to, um, somebody, uh, doing a virus and coming in and, and, and being able to mess up some stuff. So that's a short of it, but if you look at the video. And, and listen to the training or li- uh, look at the attachment, the Zoom attachment that he provided us. With the proper decorum, then that'll explain to you even further. Is there any additional question, mayor?
Uh, Alman Thomas, does you, you have it?
Yes, uh, so where do, how does this affect our citizen participation?
It doesn't, it doesn't affect it. They just won't be in the same format as it currently is. We have to invite them in for public comment while they're watching the meeting. So if we were in the public, in a regular board meeting where the people are sitting there watching the meeting. Then they only come up to the, the podium when it's time for a public comment, it will be the same type of format. But we won't run the risk of being, um, Zoom bombed and have someone to come in and something inappropriate happens. Or, you know, anything that happens. So like when people are not being muted and all that, that's a distraction to our board. Meeting, we'll be able to control those things as well.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, all woman, um, all, um. All. Uh, I'm finna call you, all woman Dale.
Okay, um, I think this is a horrible idea. Anytime that we have to. Get webinar to get on YouTube, Facebook, but our citizens. Who we serve don't have a voice. And we have a IT, uh, company that can also answer those questions instead of just one person's opinion about us being. Photo bombed or whatever I see because I see now that some of us are prepared to be on TV. So I think it's unfair to the board. That we can, we want, we want to do something that's going to take away the power from the citizens who we represent. But we can put it out all across the world for everybody else to see. That is unfair. And we should be, we should, we are a grassroots community. We're not here to put our information now all over the world. For certain people to be put out there like that. If we can't serve the people that, that, that we in our wards. If they don't have a chance to speak, if they don't have a chance to chat. But we want to put it out of the whole world, then shame on us. Because we're a grassroots community with ten thousand or more. We're not like the St. Louis Public School District. That may serve fifty thousand people. We're here serving the citizens of Belle Fount neighbors and they should never, never. Be without a voice. Without a, a way to speak. And those who want to do that, maybe they need to go run for a bigger office and get, you know, put out somewhere else, but the people here. In Ward Four are very upset. They are very upset that they didn't know about the meeting yesterday. That certain people don't want them to talk. And this is unfortunate that we represent, they allowed us to send in these seats. They pay us a stipend and we want to shut them down, but we want to show it to the world. And this is my opinion and I vote no on this. We need to keep it here in our community for our citizens. And take care of them, their daily needs instead of all the other stuff that's being brought up. And that's my opinion and it's going to stay my opinion.
All woman Wes.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, this is by no means taking away the voice of the citizens. Uh, it would prevent things like, uh, someone saying you stupid. Meaning the mayor, it would take that away. Um. If we want to do things correctly. And the parliamentarian gave us ways to do that and we are struggling right now. Trying to get things in order. We have residents who want to speak for twenty minutes. Uh, and they're, they are allowed to do that. Uh, this is bringing structure. Not taking away their voice. By all means, we want to hear from the residents that we serve. Uh, so this is just a means of giving them. Their way to speak and giving the board a way to conduct business without unnecessary insults. Because that's what they are. They use the chat room to insult the board. Um, and, you know, it's been said, we're supposed to take it. Well, I'm not going to take it. I'm a human being. I do the best that I can for the city, not for Ward One, but for the entire city. And, uh, we don't want to take away their voice, but we need to be able to control what is said. Thank you very much.
All woman, I mean, sorry, Alderman Christian.
Thank you. Uh, my only thing is if we can get out to more people and everything. Why wouldn't we want more people to see what's going on in our city? Whether we're doing it right or wrong, the more people that see it. The better. The more you make it available to everyone, the better. The more availability to everything we have, the better. So I would go for, I would go, I would be in favor of this.
Um, seeing no other hands up, uh. Uh, do, 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 uh, uh, city clerk, would you, uh, state the motion and, uh?
Okay, let me go to the motion.
Mayor, as a point of order, please, may I speak?
Go ahead.
Um, we have constantly asked individuals not to disrupt the chat area so we can follow our parliamentarian procedures. So you could have, um, been able to see my motion that I typed in. Um, we have individuals from last night till this night that continue to, um, make responses in that, um, chat room and as the chair. I'm asking that you would, um, be the one to direct them to cease, um, the communication in the chat so we can conduct business.
We have a, we have a, um. We have a motion on the floor by, uh, Alderman Carol. To, uh, form a committee of four all the persons to investigate accounts payable and that, uh.
Point of order, point of order is my motion, but like I said, it's been, it's been hijacked by the individuals who posted underneath there. So let me go, um, to my motion and try to repaste it.
My hand is up.
Okay, uh. Uh, go ahead and speak, my dear.
Um, mayor, um, the, the chat is in the room. I, I, I hope that we continue to reserve the rights of the citizens that we serve.
I'm sorry, point of order. I thought you were calling for the motion for us to vote. We don't want to go back to talk, I'm sorry, to keep talking.
Order, we're waiting for her to type it.
It's already there, mayor, please.
But mayor, I ask that you not take away the citizens' rights.
I'm waiting on, uh. Um, all woman Elliott was typing the motion in and she asked to speak.
It was already there, mayor.
What it was, I thought it was already there, but, uh.
Yeah, that's why I was saying that people were interjecting and I was asking you, could you ask them to refrain? From doing that because we have decided we were used to chat for conducting business.
Um, well, what, what do you want to do with this motion? This one, I want to know now because I'm trying to.
I put it in there for you to reread it, sir.
Okay. Says I motion that the board purchased the additional Zoom package to include the webinar feature. And that's it, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
It's written twice, so, okay, is there a second?
We've already seconded, mayor. We've already se- excuse me, point of order. We've already seconded this. We're, we're getting ready to vote on this, mayor.
All right, let's vote. All in favor say, what's on the roll?
All the woman West.
Yes.
All the woman Tatman. All the woman Reed.
Yes.
Alderman Carol.
Yes.
Alderman Thomas.
No.
Alderman Christian.
Yes.
All the woman Dale's.
Absolutely no.
All the woman Avon Elliott.
Yes.
And all the woman Tatman, are you there? Oh, she text me. She left at seven, seven forty-four. So you have one, two, three, four, five, yes, three, no.
All right, community outreach, back to school drive through. All woman, uh, Elliott.
I'm. Um, mayor, um.
I'm sorry. So all the woman Tatman was not here. So the vote should not be five to three. She was not here to vote.
Okay, you're right. It's five to two.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right.
Thank you, mayor. Um, at a previous board meeting, um, I mentioned that I would like to. Bring before the board an opportunity to, um, coordinate a back to school drive through event. And so I placed this on the agenda for, um, to vote for us to do that. And, uh, for me to explain more about it, but I would, um, like to, um, do the motion and then we can, um, proceed with the discussion.
Well, who's doing the, uh?
I move, I move to, um, uh, move that the board, um, accepts, um. Accepts, uh, I moved that the board, um, allow for me to chair, um, a back to school drive through. Um, with the police department and the fire district and youth commission boards.
Okay.
All the woman West, I second.
Okay. Uh, further discussion, uh, all woman Dale.
I apologize. I did not mean to have my hand up. Sorry.
Any other discussion? Then, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposes nay. As have. Approval mask distribution. All woman Elliott.
Yes, sir. Um, when, when we finally understood, um, about the policy. That was adopted last year concerning donations, um. We learned that those donations after the event that they are designated for, the board has to approve how they're allocated. I did send an email to you, um, thinking that you had that authority to do that, so I asked about the process. But once I read it, I learned that that was, um, the board responsibility. Um, in the report that was given, um, by, um, the rec center staff. Um, I did speak with them as a courtesy to ask, um, if they would be willing. To facilitate the distribution of those masks and I wanted to, um, make a motion on that tonight. So that those resources can be available to the city, um, the citizens and, um, for us to include. Um, those items for distribution to, um, inst- internally to, um, departments that need it. So, um, I would like to make a motion that, um. The rec center staff, uh, facilitate the plan and distribution of the masks donated, um, to the city of Belle Fount neighbors. Uh, from, um, St. Louis County, um, the St. Louis County, it was the St. Louis County Health Department. Hold on, let me.
All the woman West, I second. Mayor, my hand is right.
Okay, wait, wait just a minute. Uh.
Okay, okay.
Are you finished?
Um, yes, sir. I'm, I'm gonna put in the motion, um, if you, if you want to start with the debate, I'm gonna put in the, um, the motion in the chat.
Okay, let's take it and, uh, all the woman Wes, all woman Dale, you have come in.
Um, I don't think the masks that are in the, um. That are left, that are in the boardroom are, were donated from St. Louis County. I think they were given to Dinah as a courtesy from one of her, um, one that she knows. To give out to the citizens of Belle Fount neighbors, which has already been done in wars one, one, two, and. And in the process for war three, but I don't think those, uh, masks were donated by St. Louis County.
All right, uh. Any other, any other comments?
Yes, mayor, um, I did want to, um, speak to, um, that statement. She said, uh, all the woman Dale says she thinks. Based on, um, a post that I made that all the women, um, Tatman responded to. She indicated that she received a donation from, um. Uh, county councilwoman Rochelle Gray, which we did not know, who works for the St. Louis County. So, um, there was no indication of a special organization that provided those resources. And, um, she indicated that resources were specifically for covert testing and when that. When that, um, testing ended, um, based on our policy, it was the board's, um, responsibility. To determine how they would be, um, distributed and, um, the process of distribution was not brought before the board. And, um, two, all the people facilitated that process on their own and, um, on social media. All the, all the persons' emails were posted and it was stated that if, um, citizens needed masks, that the board members. Can be contacted and there was never been it with the board and the board was not even aware of that post. And, um, it prompted a lot of, of dialogue and, um. And, and that's why we're at this point of, of determining how to properly, uh, facilitate the distribution of those items. So, um, in communication with, um, the rec center staff, since they will facilitate. Um, I would like to add that as, um, as a city manager, that you also ensure that. Um, city staff have those resources if we do not properly have them available. So it's not just for the citizens that I originally was going to motion for it to be.
So we already, uh, no. What you say staff, no staff member come, uh, has been denied mask that I'm aware of.
That was, that was a statement at the last board meeting that, that, yes.
And, uh, but, uh, if, if that happened, then I don't want that to happen again.
Yes, sir.
Have masks and someone come and ask for one, they should be able to get it. Uh, but I don't think we ought to complicate everything. Uh, I mean, just give the mask out. Well, we got to go to the board and have all these long discussions. About giving away masks and where it came from. I'm not aware of any, any, uh. Anything covert related coming from the county. Uh, we've gotten stuff from private sources, but I don't know anything about the county. I was on, I was on a Zoom call with the mayors today. And that was one of the topics of discussion. The county has not moved, uh, on, on this covert money. On helping us with, uh. With masks, uh, even the, well, they, the guy came out about the testing. They're doing a testing. So you need a motion to give the mask out. Is that what you're saying? That the board has to approve everything.
Yes, sir.
Giving away masks. Is that what you're saying?
Based on our, based on our policies, yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposes nay.
We do have some people's hands up, mayor, um, during the discussion. Get some pants that's up.
I can't see the hands up and read the statement at the same time. I can't see the hands up and read the statement at the same time. The statement covers the hands up. Alderwoman Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually called St. Louis County Health Department when we received those masks because I wanted to make sure there was not going to be a financial cost to the city of Bellefountain neighbors for them. And I do not have the young lady's name. It's in my other office. And, but she did say they were donated because we were handling COVID testing and that that was donated to the city of Bellefountain neighbors. I asked, well, will we have to pay you back? What if we have residual? She said, that is for your city because you're doing the COVID testing. So it was nothing special for one alderperson. It was because of the testing that was happening at Bellefountain neighbors rec center parking lot. So, and I think it is best that we do go through this process that we collectively as a board decide that that was the reason for the ordinance, that we decide how donations are handled if only one or two alderpeople of one or two wards know about these masks. And when I had citizens calling me, how do I get the mask? I'm like, I don't know anything about any mask. You know, where are they? I, you know, I couldn't give them out. So this way, there's a central location for people to go to and to get the mask, you know.
Thank you. Alderman Thomas.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The, we're, we're in a pandemic right now. The latest word that I saw this evening on the news was there are three things that need to be done in order for us to quell the pandemic. And I believe I remembered them. One is to wear your mask. The second is social distancing. The third is to stay out of crowds. If we, as alderpeople, and maybe it can just be included in the motion, to amend the motion to say that if there are alderpeople who want to pass the mask out within their ward so that anyone who can't make it to the rec center to pick up their mask, that that is what needs to be done too. These are unperilous times. If we don't do something, and as alderpeople in having the mask, and I understand what the ordinance is, but we can't put the twist on it to say that, yes, you can go to the rec center, but your alderpeople have those masks available too. That's all I have to say right now.
Alderwoman Dales.
Yes, Mayor. We did give out the masks, and again, I don't think the masks that are there were given by St. Louis County. Because Dinah and I are pretty much engaged with our community. And we, we find that is very, very important. We have a lot of people who go to work during the times that the rec center may or may not be open. We have a lot of seniors who are not, do not have access to the internet. So what we do, we take it upon ourselves to serve our citizens as they have hired us as their elected officials. And we choose to be engaged with them and do the things that we can do with them. And that's what we're going to continue to do. And we also noted that you wanted every citizen in the city of Bellefountain neighbors to get a pack of masks. And that's what we were doing. And we will continue to do that. We will continue to serve our people. We don't, we don't look at our residents as we got to go find a policy. We serve them as needed, as today, as an emergency, right where they are, not as policy. We treat them as people, not as, we're not policy pushers. That's all I got.
Alderwoman West.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think it's just a matter of how you do things. You do things by policy or you do things the way you want to do them regardless as to what the policy states. Personally, I am physically disabled, cannot go door-to-door to hand out masks, and that's not my job. The rec center has agreed to pass them out. People can come in their cars. We have plenty of seniors who still drive. I am one of them. So they can come to the rec center. We can walk the mask down to their car. They never have to get out of their cars. So this is a matter of following policy and procedure, which many of us feel like we are above. We just have to follow it, whether we like it or not. It's just that simple. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Oh. Alderwoman Tatman. Alderwoman Tatman.
I'm sorry. I had to, I had to jump off. Come back on. It seems like I came back in at a good time. I just want to share information concerning the mask since I was the one that the masks helped facilitate getting the mask along with the mayor and our legal counsel. On June 2nd, when we had our first BOA meeting, I did in my report mention and thank our legal counsel for getting an additional forty thousand masks. And I did report that there were ten cases left in the court chambers and that I would be distributing masks to citizens in Ward One. I think that was a great opportunity. If my colleagues had questions or concerns at that particular time, they could have been put forth. I understand that there was an old policy that was found, that was never voted on or passed. I would be amenable for looking at something like that. But I think we missed an opportunity almost two months ago to have this discussion because I, with everything else I do, I was open with what we received and where the additional masks were. And I think we missed an opportunity, if we had concerns then, to ask questions and bring those up. But I am, I'm excited that the other citizens are getting masks. I had even said that if it was a hardship on my colleagues, we already had citizens who had agreed to help us distribute masks in the other wards. But after I found out that there was another paradigm set up, I had no problem with that. I'm just glad that we all are looking out for the safety and the health of our citizens. Thank you. And another thing before I end, and I know I keep saying it, and I'm gonna keep saying it, we are in a pandemic. And the mandate from our county executive went out, I think, the day before. And so I thought it was prudent and beneficial if an act of kindness, that the masks that have and securing additional masks was a good idea, that we would show our citizens that we were concerned, that they have something that would help them adhere to the mandate as well as saying that we were concerned about their hea- health and safety. That's all.
All right. I see two of the same hands that were up.
Yeah, I was just, Mayor, I just raised my hand and get my second term to comment.
All right. Can we please make it quick so we can move?
Yes, sir. I will, I will make it quick. I just wanted to share my analysis. For one, I have made inquiries through email that were not addressed concerning masks and other distributions. In addition to that, our alderperson has chosen to place items in a report form instead of agenda, which would allow for discussion and approval. And so I, I do think that we should get away from items that are related to the city and placing them in a report where we're not, based on parliamentarian procedure, to engage in debate and discussion when someone's giving their personal report. And based on the comments on next door, there were several individuals that indicate that masks were left at abandoned homes, vacant homes, that individuals had been taking masks from the doors and selling them. All of this was documented on next door. And if we have policies and procedures in place, it protects the interest in our, of the city and our reputation when we're all on board and can say the same exact thing. It makes us all look good. So we have to be mindful of those policies by way of making sure that we don't have compliance issues and any concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's move now. Do we, we have a motion on the floor in a second?
Yes, sir.
And that ends the discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Oh, may, as have it, and so order. All right. There was a mess. Partnership with University of Missouri Extension. Carol. Alderman Carol.
I move that the Board of Alderpersons refer to the Parks and Rec Board to partner with and take on the planning process with the University of Missouri Extension's Passport to the Arts Program.
All in, I mean, is that second?
Alderwoman West, second.
Okay. Are there any further discussion? Then all in favor say aye.
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 Opposes nay? As have it. Approval of certi- approval of certified municipal official training. Oh, Alderman Carol.
I move to rescind the motion and adoption of allowing Alderman Carroll to attend online courses to become a certified municipal official from the July 2nd, 2020 Board of Alderpersons meeting.
Is there a second?
Christian will second.
Are there any further discussion? Alderman Elliott.
No, I had my hand up to motion to do the second. I'm sorry.
Alderman Dales.
I wanted to respond to Alderman Carroll's. He sent me an email. And I want to respond to him here at the meeting. The reason why I didn't respond is because the previous attorney said that when we start emailing back and forth, that we're actually having a meeting and that's not posted. So the reason why, that's one of the reasons why I didn't respond to you. And because we're registered with the state, with Missouri Municipal League, we take the classes online. We set up a password. So, you know, I don't need to ask the board to take the class to become certified. And I just wanted to respond to you, Alderman Carroll.
All right. Do you still need a motion to go? Do you still want it?
Yeah, I'd like to vote.
Then all in, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposes nay? As have it.
He has a second motion for the same topic. He has a second motion for the same topic.
Alderman Carol, proceed.
I move that the Board of Alderpersons approve Alderman Carroll and Alderwoman Avant Elliott in becoming a certified elected official at a cost of a hundred and fifty dollars for an administrative fee and to take up to sixteen hours of online courses offered by the Municipal League at a cost of ten dollars per course or per hour of training.
Christian will second.
All right. Moved and second. Are there any discussion?
Yes, I have, yes, I have my hand up.
I see it. Proceed.
I would like to know why it would cost when we're already members of the Missouri Municipal League, when we, we can go online, if we have a password, and take the classes. So I don't understand why it costs certain individuals a hundred and fifty dollars or ten dollars when you can go online, take the classes, which are starred, and they'll become a certified municipal league. At least that's what I have been doing for the last four years. So I don't understand why it's different unless the Missouri Municipal League has changed since we already have our membership. So maybe one of the ones that wants it to be paid for can answer that.
All right. Is there a response? No response. So any further discussion? Alderman Christian.
The Missouri Municipal League certification is different than the Metro League of St. Louis. The Metro League of St. Louis, the city pays into as a membership. Yes, there are classes online. That is not the one that certifies you as a certified municipal official. The Missouri Municipal League does, and there is an additional fee of a hundred and fifty dollars to be able to do that. During the previous administration, I was asked that. I saw it. The Alderman woman was asked that too, because I thought we signed up at the same time. But I may be mistaken. Maybe it was someone else that was on the board previously. But I thought someone else had asked to sign up around the same time as me too. But the MML training is completely different than online webinar, webinar classes that the Metro League of St. Louis provides. Metro League of St. Louis does not certify you as a municipal official. The Missouri Municipal League does, and there is an additional fee to be able to do that. And I have completed that, which was from the previous administration. I do believe Chief Eiler has completed that also. And I think he was the only one in the city that did actually have that until I received mine. So having more people go through those classes and everything and to learn and to actually be acknowledged with the actual certificate and the final completion would actually better the city. That is all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, may I respond? And Jim, I, I think that could be so because I've never, and maybe Denny did it because I am, I have been taking the classes and I do know the difference between Missouri Municipal League and St. Louis County Municipal League. And when I, when we go to the training sessions, there are classes that you get credit for as well. So maybe it could have been that Denny took care of it and I just wasn't aware of it because I have been taking the class.
Alderwoman Tatman.
Yes, and lieu of gathering all this information, I would like to amend the motion to have it open for any other person serving on the board that would want to go through that certification, i.e. myself. I don't know who else wants to do that. So I would like to amend the motion that would include all alderpersons who would want to take that training.
Alderman Carol.
I, I'd second that.
Okay. So I've been moved and proper second to amend that to open that up to any board member who would want to go.
Mayor, could you have the alderwoman put that in the chat box for later?
I'm doing that. Yes, I'm doing it now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussions? I see Alderman Thomas. No further discussion?
No, sir. I was in agreement. That's what I was going to ask also because I had spoke on this.
We just have a vote now. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposes nay? As have it. Approval of National Association of Parliamentarian Training for Elected Officials and Staff. Alderman Carroll. I'm sorry. Alderman Tatman, did I pass you up?
No, sir. I was typing, so I'll, I'll take my hand down. I'm sorry.
Alderman Carol.
I move that the Board of Alderpersons approve the city clerk, the building department clerk, and up to four alderpersons to take an online course, minutes made easy, offered by the National Association of Parliamentarians at the cost of twenty-five dollars per individual. The BOA will decide these for alderpersons at the next BOA meeting, August 20th.
Is there a second?
Christian will second.
Are there any further discussion?
I would.
You're right. Alderman Tatman.
My hand is raised.
You had a hand up?
Yes, sir.
Would you proceed, please?
Okay, thank you. So with the, I just wanted Mayor to ask clarification. Does it have to be four or can more Aldermen go? Where we can just make a motion to open it up and then the individuals have to share with the city clerk their interest in attending. Mayor, could Alderman Carroll provide that clarification?
Alderman Carol.
Somebody can amend it. I just, I just, I sent out an email a couple of weeks ago asking who would be interested um, to do this. I only got a couple of responses back, so that's why I selected four. But I think if, um, I think it's important that the city clerk go and the building department clerk go as, as she's the backup for, for the city clerk. And I just, I just chose four because like I said, I think I only got three responses that they would be interested in this type of training. So if somebody wants to amend it to include all Alderpersons and, and the mayor, that's up to them.
Okay, I just wanted, I was just trying to seek clarification on the four, um, um, but so right now is three, three Alderpersons that's interested?
That's from the email. I was about three. I think I got three. I, I think, I mean, this has been two weeks ago, so I'm going to say about three, yes.
Yes, and I would also like to take the training.
Okay, um, I would like to make a motion to, um, amend and add, um, and to strike for Alderpersons and to add, um, any Alderpersons.
Okay, um, Alderman Thomas.
I second the most.
Alright, is it moved and properly second? Are there any further discussion? I see Alderman Tatman hands up, hand is up. Uh, okay, so another hands up. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose's name. As have it and so order. Um, all woman Elliot.
Oh, no, sir. Um, my, my hand was just up from early. I'm lowering it now. I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, ordinance adoption, uh, bill number 2020 dash 2598.
2589.
Um, is it? Yeah, 89. Alderman Carol.
I move to do the first and second readings and adoption of bill number 2020 dash 2589 and ordinance amending Division 4 of Article 3 relating to the city attorney and sections 18 dash 8, 18 dash 9, and 18 dash 25 of the Belle Fountain Neighbor City Code relating to the prosecuting attorney and the office of provisional judge.
Is there a second?
Christian will second.
Any further discussion? Then, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose's name.
No.
No.
Okay. Uh, call, second read.
I move to do the first, or I, uh, this is the second reading and of bill number 2020 dash 2589 and ordinance amending Division 4 of Article 3 relating to the city attorney and sections 18 dash 8, 18 dash 9, and 18 dash 25 of the Belle Fountain Neighbor City Code relating to the prosecuting attorney and the office of provisional judge.
Uh, all woman Tatman. All woman Tatman. You're muted.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I, I just had a point of clarification because I've been doing some reading and talking. So I don't, uh, Mr. Chair, if this can be directed to legal counsel, Senate Bill 5.
Point of order. We don't have a second for discussion. He thought your hand was raised for a second.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, who said that second?
All the woman Tatman.
Okay then.
Oh, she said.
Alright, then moved and probably second. Are there any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Proceed.
For point of clarification, um, wanted a clear, um, meaning for separation of the courts under Senate Bill 5. I didn't know if this was encroachment because, so if I could, Mr. Chair, if legal counsel, if possible, could bring some clarification. Is this uh, still separation according to Senate Bill 5 where the courts are now separate from, um, the other legislative and governmental body, please?
Uh, yes, uh, Alderwoman Tatman. Um, this bill was drafted to address some of the concerns that had been raised about the separation of the functions of the municipal court. Uh, essentially what occurred here was that the section on the prosecuting attorney, uh, was removed from the provision related to the municipal court and moved to the section that deals with the city attorney. And then in chapter 19, uh, chapter 18, that is, dealing with the municipal court, there were provisions put in both 18 dash 25, dealing with the provisional judge and 18 dash 9, dealing with the municipal court, making it clear that the judges and the court personnel of the municipal court are directly under the authority and subject to the directives of the presiding judge of the municipal court. Although St. Louis County Circuit Court has general administration authority over the court, the personnel of the municipal court in the city of Belle Fountain Neighbors will report directly to the presiding judge. Those were the changes made to conform to Senate Bill 5.
And so in clarification, what we're doing now is bringing ourselves into compliance?
Yes, that, that was intent, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Alderman Thomas.
Yes, sir. Uh, a point of correction. The paperwork I have says bill number 2590 and it should say 2589.
What?
On the, the, the ordinance that he just read, the paperwork, the paper that it's written on, I thought the bill number was 2589. But the bill number on this piece of paper says 2590 is just a point of correction.
That's the one, that's the second one. 2590.
This is, right, that's the second one.
Right.
But I got an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 4 relating to city attorney in Chapter 18, Sections 18, 19. Exactly what we just got from talking about. If you look at the top of the paper, and maybe mine was the only one, so.
Mine's the same thing. I was going off the, um.
Right.
Mine is the same also on the actual text of the bill.
So I'm just making sure that I'm reading the right thing.
Okay, uh, so, uh, I'm trying to call my, so this, 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 uh, this ordinance brings us in compliance? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, yes, it does, Mayor.
Okay. So.
Uh, well, I, I'm sorry. Could I just clarify that? As it relates to these provisions, there are still other revisions required to the city's code. Um, and those will be forthcoming. But this brings these provisions of the code into compliance.
Okay. So are there any further discussion? All woman Tatman.
No, sir.
Alright, then, uh.
Excuse me, can we get the proper bill number for this then? Because on the agenda, it's saying 2589 and on the paperwork we got is 2590.
Right.
So these are, what we'll have to do is on your, well, I got these bills from the city attorney. So 2589 and 2590 appears to be switched. So the one you're reading should be 2590. And 2589 is the other amending.
Mayor Matt.
Yes, you may.
So just for, um, so this bill is 2590 that we're going to read or vote on. And then the, the, the next one, the violation penalties, Section 106.4, that's, um, 2589, bill number 2589 then?
No, that would be 2591.
That's 91.
Yes. 89 is the chapter 19 of the Belle Fountain Neighbor City Code.
Mayor, may I make a point of clarification, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so because there was, the request was for this agenda for items that were to be adopted, um, to be added on this agenda. Um, one of the Alderpersons decided that she would wait on her ordinance, which changed, um, the sequence of it. But, um, Fran may not have updated that sequence on the paperwork and left it as is from when we received it the first time. So the sequence would be correct because the last items that was placed on the agenda was not board approved because of the, um, meeting not having a quorum. So in order for there to be proper sequence, that's why they're listed as such. So she would need to amend the paperwork and not any, make any changes to what we're doing tonight. So that, that would have to be, um, a correction made, and I don't know if that will be considered clerical correction, so no motion would have to be made. Um, but, um, I, I assume the, the clerk could, um, better explain that. So 89 was a ordinance that was not, was on the previous agenda and not introduced this time. And so since it was not introduced as all, at all, then the, um, number was assigned to, um, the ordinances in the sequence they were.
Well, Alderman Carol, where are you with your motion now?
I, I'm just trying to get clarification on what number we're going to use from the, the city clerk or the uh, attorney. If this is a clerical, can we proceed or do we need to hold off? So I'm asking you to ask the, the, the city clerk or, uh, the attorney how to proceed with it.
Um, this is Dorothy. I believe that Alderwoman Avon Elliott made a good suggestion. I believe this is a clerical era that can be cured by the proper motion.
Alderman Carol.
So then with that, just on, so then the motion as it's, it's made, then that's the proper bill number then, and we could proceed?
Yes, that is my understanding. Um, I'd, I'd ask Fran to confirm that.
Right, we can do that. And when I get to the office tomorrow, we'll switch the bill number on the paper.
Okay.
2589 would stay as is, the way you read it, Alderman Carol.
Alright, that's, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So then I, I believe we're at the, uh, a vote then, Mayor.
I'll go and say it again. I didn't hear it last.
I believe we're at, at the vote then. We can.
Alright, alright, then, uh, all in favor call the roll. Madam Clerk.
Okay, Alderwoman Avon Elliott.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dale's. Does she leave? Um, Alderwoman West.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tatman.
Yes.
Alderman, Alderwoman Reed.
Yes.
Alderman Carol.
Yes.
Alderman Thomas.
Yes.
Alderman Christian.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dale's.
Yes.
Okay. All yes, Mayor.
Alright, the motion passes. Uh, then we'll move to the second bill. I'm assuming it's 2591.
Let's see that.
What is it?
Clarification, Mayor, you can just continue, um, with the sequence on the agenda as, as indicated.
Well, that's, that's, uh, that is what I had done.
You had mentioned 91 and the next one is 90.
Bill number 2020, 9590, is that, uh?
That's what we're on right now, Mayor.
Okay, well, I thought we had switched, but alright, that's why I proceed.
I move to do the first and second readings and adoption of bill number 2020 dash 2590, Section 106.5, violation penalties of the Belle Fountain Neighbors Property Maintenance Code regarding municipal code violations.
Uh, is there a second? Uh, I know, I'm sure somebody has a hand up. Um, all woman Elliot.
Second.
Uh, there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Mayor, point of, point of, we gotta do a second reading, Mayor.
Okay, well, we're on the first one now.
Right, yes. Madam, proceed.
Make pardon.
Madam, proceed.
We, we need to do.
We do have to vote on the first one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm confused. I'm sorry.
Call a roll, Madam Clerk.
Okay.
Mayor, point of order. We don't do a roll call vote on the first read. Just do yays and nays and we do it on the second.
Well, thank you for that clarification. All in favor say aye.
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 Uh, all opposed, say nay. Alright, do the second.
I'd like to do the second reading, uh, and adoption of bill number 2020 dash 2590, Section 106.5, the violation penalties of the Belle Fountain Neighbors Property Maintenance Code regarding, regarding maintenance code violations.
Uh, all woman Elliot.
Second.
Are there any further discussion? Alright, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Alderwoman West.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tatman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Reed.
Yes.
Alderman Carol.
Yes.
Alderwoman, Alderman Thomas. Alderman Christian.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dale's.
Yes.
Alderwoman Avon Elliott.
Yes.
Alderman Thomas, he's muted, so. All yes except for Mayor.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh.
I thought I pushed it. I'm sorry. Yes.
All yes, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Uh, bill number 2020, 2590.
Mayor, point of order. Can we please have you or Fran, you or city clerk, uh, read the bill for 25, 20, uh, 89 and 90 to let us know what the ordinance numbers are for those?
Yes.
Know that the most that the bill passed and da, 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 da.
Right. Uh, bill number 2589 was passed by the Board of Aldermen and it will become ordinance number 2582.
Point of order, what was the, um, the vote? It was a what to what?
Oh, it was seven to zero. Eight to zero, I'm sorry.
Okay, also with, 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 uh, the ordinance A, and I guess it's bill number 2589 or whatever it was changed to, you need to do the, uh, da, 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 becomes long.
Right. Okay, bill number 2589 will become ordinance number 2582.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I wonder, Mayor.
I didn't hear the rest of it. I didn't hear the rest of it.
Definitely.
The board voted and passed bill number 2589, which will become ordinance number 2582.
Winning if signed by the mayor.
Winning if signed by the mayor.
All right, let's do the other one. See, uh, I'm assuming it's, uh, 2020, 2591. That's what's on the paper. Uh, Alderman Christian. I mean, I'm sorry, Carroll.
Um, I move to do the first and second readings and adoption of bill number 2020 dash 2591 and ordinance amending Section 1 dash 10A, General Penalty Provisions in Section 17 dash 1, Definitions of the Belle Fountain Neighbor City Code Regarding Minor Traffic Code and Municipal Code Violations.
All right, is there a second? Uh, all woman Elliot?
Second.
Are there any further discussion? You also move for the second read?
Yes, I did, Mayor.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose as may? Second read, please.
This is second reading of bill number 2020 dash 2591 and ordinance amending Section 110A, General Penalty Provisions in Section 17 dash 1, Definitions of the Belle Fountain Neighbor City Code Regarding Minor Traffic Code and Municipal Code Violations.
Uh, is there a second? Uh, Alderman Elliot?
Second.
And this, and if further discussion? Roll call, please.
All the women Avant Elliott?
Yes.
All the woman Dale's?
Yes.
Alderman Christian?
Yes.
All the woman Tatman? Alderman, uh, Carroll?
Yes.
All the woman Reed? Ald- Alderman Thomas?
Yes.
All the woman West?
Yes.
And all the woman Tatman?
Yes. Oh, can you hear me? Okay.
Oh, yes, Mayor.
All right, this concludes our agenda.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Point of order. All the woman Reed? Um, could you please have city clerk read the last two bills?
Yes.
As finals, how they were passed and what ordinance number they will become.
Okay, bill number 2590 was passed by the Board of Alderpersons with a seven to zero, uh, eight to zero vote and will become ordinance number 253. Bill number 2590 will become ordinance number 2583, winning if signed by the mayor. Bill number 2591 was passed by the Board of Aldermen with the eight to zero vote and bill number 2591 will become ordinance number 2584, winning if signed by the mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, this concludes our agenda.
Point of order, Mayor. We have, um, one agenda item, closed session. It's on the agenda.
If you would give me a minute, I'll get to that. Right now, I want to thank the public for, for being with us tonight and, uh, thank you for your participation. We will now close out the regular scheduled meeting and move into closed session. Madam Clerk instruct us on that, however you guys do it.
Okay, you guys received the, uh, the paperwork.
Fran, I was looking for.
I'm sorry, what?
My hand is raised to make a mo-
Go ahead, I'm s-
I don't have the information, Fran.
It was on the same paper as the one that you're on now. It was, this one was at the top and that one was at the bottom.
I don't have.
On the same email.
On the same, on the same email.
I came, I came in on a different link on this one. I couldn't find it today, so I'll try to look.
I emailed it to you because, you know, I don't get that number.
Uh, Alderman Thomas?
Yes, sir. I don't have it either.
On your, do everybody else?
I didn't see an email with the closed meeting, uh, zone information.
Same one as the one you got now. That's the one we're on now. It was on the same one, but I can't say it because other people are on the.
Right, right. But can you send it to me?
All the woman Avant Elliott, can you send me that code?
Yes, um, uh, Mayor, uh, for the first half of the meeting, we would need, um, the chief. So, um, all the, um, Fran, will chief already have that information as well?
Yeah, I know.
He does?
Yeah. I sent, I sent it to him as well.
I can make, uh, Mayor, may I make the motion now so then, um, we can take care of that after?
After, explain that, please.
I need to make a motion to go into closed session with a roll call vote and then I can forward the, um, the meeting invite to the individuals who are expressing they can't, um, they don't know where the email is that has the link in.
That's right, just go ahead and make your motion.
All right, I would like to make a motion to go into closed session for legal actions, causes of action, litigation, and privileged communication between the city's representative and its attorneys for Section 16.01, um, Section One, and hiring, firing, and discipline for promoting employees, Section, um, 10, 16.021 dash 3.
Alderman second.
All right, been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
It's a roll call vote, Mayor, point of order.
Roll call.
All the woman West? I think she's gone. Uh, all the woman Tatman?
Yes.
All the woman Reed?
Yes.
Alderman Carroll?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas?
Yes.
Alderman Christian?
Yes.
All the woman Dale's?
Yes.
All the woman Avant Elliott?
Yes.
All, uh, seven yes and one absent, Mayor.
Who was absent?
All the woman West. I, I don't see her on here now.
Okay then. All right, then, uh, it's, uh, we got a motion and a second and we have to roll call, so we move into closed session now.
Okay.
May I request about a five-minute recess before we go from here to there?
All right.
Okay, so I'm signing off of this one and logging on to the other one. Uh, all the women Avant Elliott, you're sending.
I've already sent them the, um, the, to all the persons, the email that you sent to us before.
Text that she needs it as well.
It's, so how did people get on if it was, it's the same email that you sent?
I, I don't know how to, I don't, I can't answer that. It's on the same email.
I know. Okay, thank you.
Okay.